This is a request to consider a zone change at 1360 Pleasant Hill Road near Percy Priest Lake. It's to permit a boat storage facility or self-storage facility. Properties outlined in red currently contains one single-family home and it's just to the west of Bell Road. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The existing zoning is one- and two-family residential. It permit a maximum of 35 units with 28 lots and seven duplex lots. The proposed SP is regulatory. It would limit the use to self-service storage and boat storage. It provides requirements for screening, landscaping, and buffer yards. It restricts height. Provides standards for vehicular access, right-of-way dedications, and signage. This is in the Donaldson-Hermitage Community Plan. The policy is conservation as well as district employment center. The conservation is a small, little area central to the site and it's just a depression on the site. The district employment center policy is intended to enhance and create concentrations of employment that are often in campus-like settings. It also supports commercial uses as well as light industrial uses as well as multifamily, medium-density, and high-density and supportive uses. Staff finds that the request is consistent with the policy as the proposed use provides a supporting use to residential uses, including if there was high-density residential usually it comes in the form of multifamily apartments which need these type of uses. Boat storage is also located near Percy Priest which makes it ideal for boat storage. The plan also would provide a transition from the neighborhood maintenance area, or I'm sorry, from the district employment center area to the neighborhood maintenance area and neighborhood-evolving areas to the north and to the west. Inclusion staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
That looks like a piece of pizza. I've got pizza on the mind. All right, so, thank you. We appreciate it. The applicant has 10 minutes. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Call us the pizza lot.
That's my pizza property. My name is...
So...
Oh, I didn't even get my own joke. Okay, gotcha.
Now, you have 10 minutes. Hold on, don't start. It's time to start over. You have 10 minutes and then 2 minutes for rebuttal out of the 10 if you'd like.
Yes, sir. My name is Derek Byrd. I'm owner of 112 LLC. It's just me. I live at 945 Norwalk Drive, about 2 miles away from this property. I have family that lives in that one small house on the property that I repaired for them. There's also on the property a building that was used for a construction company site that has other debris left over in the property in the background back there. Last year, I met with Councilwoman Holly Huazo and we discussed this property and she said it would be a great use for the property for boat storage and regular storage. The reason for doing so is there is a Woodland Point condo complex just across Bell Road that you've seen in the previous slides. It has a couple hundred units and then there's also another apartment complex that went down just the street with about 150 units over there. So, with the density that has been placed over there, it's limited use of storage for trailers and just different things as you're moving into and out of apartments. You need to store extra furniture and things like that. So, this is in support of the growth of that area. Also is used for, as Mr. Swager told me, would be used for kind of a transitional property because it is meant to be in an employment district moving forward. So, this kind of puts a piece of property in support of that to move forward with those. I spoke with David Kattow. He's kind of the spokesman for the Woodland Point community. I used to work with him a few years ago. His concerns were just around traffic and he just didn't want another apartment complex going in over there just to add more traffic on Bell Road. Typically with storage and, Rick, and more importantly, boat storage over there, you use your boats on Saturdays, maybe five times a year. And so, this isn't introducing new traffic over there where people with boats are already coming to the lake. This is just existing traffic giving them a place to store it close to the lake and also providing storage for the apartment complexes that have gone in over there. So, most people that would use this storage already live in the area. Wouldn't be introducing a lot of new traffic and mostly, again, you put your things in storage and you leave it there until you move out of your apartment and then you pick it up and you leave. You're not visiting a unit all the time. Also, this property is not viewable from Bell Road, so as far as aesthetics, people in Woodland Point wouldn't really see the property ever. They would just have the amenities available to them. It's very near Percy Priest Lake, as you mentioned, and as you can see from the drawings there, supporting like the boat storage requirements of proximity to the lake. And also, just looking at the uses of a property, just the best uses without increasing the traffic too much. That's all I have for today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You have 2 minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support?
In support.
Yeah, we always do support first. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to microphone. You'll have 2 minutes. Come on up, line up, and you have to state your name and your address, ma'am. Thank you. And the timer is right there for you to look at it. There we go.
I'm Karen Shelton. Live at Williamsburg, 501 Williamsburg Drive condominiums. Nobody informed anybody in our condominium of this other than the planning commission. I'm the very first one going into Williamsburg and I do not want, I want it to stay residential because of the fact of the traffic. That traffic going up, especially at Pleasant View, boats coming in and out of there. Traffic is terrible there around 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I think it would be congestion when boats coming in and out of there and I just want to keep it residential. And there, far as, because, like I say, Woodland Point is a very nice area. They got new apartments in there. I just want it to stay residential.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Come on up.
I'm Betty Landuli. I live at 50 Fawn Creek Pass in Woodland Point. And my concerns are just primarily do have to do with traffic and the fact that the new apartment complex that went in is on the east side of Bell Road, south of Woodland Point. There's a new RV park that has gone in on the east side of Bell Road, just north of Woodland Point. And when they started filling the apartments, of course, the traffic increased very much on Bell Road, which was already a pretty tight traffic corridor anyway. And there's been a subsequent increase also in motor vehicle accidents and injuries. So, that concerns me. Two of my concerns, another concern is that Bell Road through there is just almost not going to be possible to widen it. It's, you know, it's sort of like just a corridor cut through the mountain, more or less, or whatever. And if there's, the times when there've been accidents there, there's no way to get through. If you're coming from the south and you're trying to get medical care, say, if something happens, you can't, if there's an accident, you can't get through. You have to go all the way back down to Couchville or Murfreesboro Road, cut through to Donaldson, come back up and get over. In order to get to a medical facility or to a healthcare person or whatever, there's no other way. There's no other way to cut through. If you're coming from the north, then again, I mean, coming north, you're going to have to go south again and cut through and come all the way around because there's no other way to get through. You can't go to the east, of course, because you're going to be in the lake. Also, if you're putting in more, you're putting in a facility for trailered vehicles, you're going to have hitches. And if you've ever seen an accident that resulted from a vehicle that was being trailered that, where that vehicle, if it fishtails, is gaining speed very rapidly and injuries can be much more significant. It's, we just really need to look at what we're going to do with Bell Road before we put anything in there that's going to impact the traffic flow.
Thank you, ma'am.
At all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? 2 minutes for your rebuttal, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight. In response to that, just that, I looked at the possible uses for this and it could have, like you said, 35 more homes or change to apartment complexes or anything like that. But to be respectful of the traffic aspects, that's where storage came into play. You don't pull your boat during, at 8:00 AM going to work. You don't take your boat to work. You don't take it home from work. It's a Saturday activity. Storage units, you're not visiting them every day. This will not be a heavily trafficked area due to, you know, any work-related busy times. It's just pretty much weekend activity to store your items and providing extra storage for the folks that already live there. Thank you.
Thank you. We declare the public hearing closed and how about we start with the council lady? We haven't started yet over there.
Thank you. Well, as someone with a boat in a boat storage place, I can confirm that I never pull it out at 8 o'clock on a weekday morning. So, I think in that sense that it does have the potential to be better than a residential unit from that traffic standpoint. I certainly understand the concerns with traffic on Bell Road. And again, just so I can get educated from an aesthetic standpoint, can someone remind me what a B landscape buffer means? That's, my understanding is that's what's required and I'm assuming that's on all sides or, can you tell me exactly what that means?
The B is required along the front and typically we don't require a buffer yard like this along the street frontage, but in this case, we provided that to ensure that there's a little screening and a little softening between the road and any development that goes on. But it can range between the shallowest is 10 feet and the widest is 20 feet and as it gets shallower, that just means the tree density and planting density increases.
Okay, so, that's one of your conditions of approval is that they have to have this buffer along all residential zone districts and districts permitting residential, which since this is R15 on both sides?
It would be a C buffer along the other sides, which is a wider buffer. So, you've got R15 and RS15 along, so this is a, we're having, anything that's not specifically stated in this SP would be looked at through MUL zoning. And so, that would require a C buffer, which is anywhere between 20 and 30 feet.
Oh, okay. Because it says here, "Screening in the form of a landscape buffer yard standard B shall be applied along all residential zone districts and districts permitting residential uses." Would that supersede that or should we add, maybe add a reference to C?
No, I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Okay. So, was that the intention? Does it need to be?
No, it's correct. I just misspoke. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, that would be a 10 to 20-foot with increased tree density?
Correct.
As you get, okay. And that seems like an important thing to me, I think, on that. I understand concerns about traffic and that's always an issue when we make any changes, it seems like. So, I mean, I think because the answer about when this traffic happens is going to be a low-traffic time on Bell Road, that that impact actually will be better than some of the alternatives.
Commissioner Diaz? Oh, no comment. Commissioner Blackshear?
Basically, just to reiterate what the council lady said, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to traffic concerns. We hear it all the time. That's generally the major concern that any neighbor has when a development is coming in, but for the reasons that the applicant stated, it doesn't seem like this type of development will be bringing added traffic. Although, I definitely hear you. You said that there's a lot of new traffic that has been introduced by other developments and obviously this area does have a lot of traffic, just does not seem like this development be bringing that much added traffic to the area.
Commissioner Farr.
I don't think I have too many serious questions, but how much of the tree coverage will remain? It looks like that's a whole lot of trees that's going to come down as a result of this.
Well, being that this is a regulatory SP, we do not have a site plan, so when it comes in, it would have to meet all landscaping requirements. That includes the tree ordinance, buffer yards, and those things. So, until it comes in, we don't know, but we would have the flexibility because it is an SP to work with whoever comes in to develop the property under the zoning.
I just would hate to see like that whole pizza slice clear cut with the exception of our buffers. So, and I know with self-storage facilities, you know, you do have a fair amount of concrete, I would assume, so that would be one concern or just a recommendation to try to minimize the amount of concrete that's put on the top of that hill. But otherwise, I agree with staff's recommendation.
Forest concrete, that is. I'm just adding to you.
Thank you.
Anyway, chairman?
I agree with the other commissioners. This is the best use. Going back to residential, you're talking 100-plus units, more traffic. There's not much noise with boat storage or with self-storage. If the landscape buffer's around there and there's, I agree with you, there's going to be a lot of clear cut and that'd be a concern, but that'd be a stormwater issue. But if we require the trees around there to buffer and not take down any of the trees, which I'm sure that'll be the recommendation from the forester. So, I think this is probably the best use for the property.
Commissioner. No comments. Mr. Tibbs? You need a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the staff recommendations.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, ayes have it. We are on item number 21, right? Everybody, keep me straight. Yep, 21.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Singay Saliki. Item 21 on the agenda today is a modification to the 31st and Long Urban Design Overlay and a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The applicant request is to reduce the minimum side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet and a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals on variance case 2016-150. Staff recommendation is to disapprove the modification request and recommend that the BZA disapprove the variance. The subject property is outlined in blue. The zoning is RM40 for a single-family, duplex, and multifamily dwellings at a density of 40 units per acre. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving, which allows moderate to high-density development in urban settings, providing more housing choices. For the modification request, the UDO standards require a minimum 10-foot side yard setback, except the side adjacent to a service lane may be 5 feet minimum. The applicant request is to reduce the required side yard setback standard from 10 feet to 5 feet. I'll begin with an overview of the UDO. The UDO was put in place to allow the application and implementation of special design standards to create a sense of place in a manner otherwise not ensured by the application of the conventional standards of the zoning code. The area has a variety of physical conditions and is divided into sub-districts where appropriate specific design standards have been developed for each sub-district by building type. The property is located in the G2 general sub-district. The building type is stacked flats, which is a permitted building type in the sub-district. The UDO requires a 10-foot minimum side yard setback for the stacked flats building type to allow adequate light and air into the ground floor spaces on adjacent multi-story buildings. The side yard setbacks also provides a place for stormwater infiltration because the aging infrastructure in the area was identified as a concern by participants in a public design process to create the UDO in 2004. The infrastructure is still a concern today due to increased development in the area. The UDO has a design review committee which reviews projects and may grant a modification to a UDO standard due to physical site constraints. Any standard within the UDO may be modified under the conditions outlined in the staff report. In the event that an applicant requests a UDO modification and disagrees with the decision granted by the UDO DRC, the applicant may appeal the decision to the planning commission. The applicant has filed a UDO modification request to reduce the side yard setback standard from 10 feet to 5 feet. The UDO DRC reviewed the project and approved a modification to the side yard setback of 5 feet on the east property line, but not to the side yard setback along the west property line. The UDO DRC determined that a 20-foot sewer easement along the east property line ensures that the spacing between buildings meets the intent of the 10-foot side yard setback standard. The applicant has requested an appeal of the UDO DRC decision to the planning commission and also a variance to the BZA. The planning commission is required by the zoning code to provide a recommendation to the BZA for variance requests within the UDO. The property is located mid-block on the south side of Long Boulevard. The aerial image shows Long Boulevard to the top left, whereas it is on the right on the proposed site plan. It has a 50-foot frontage on Long Boulevard and alley access in the rear. It has a minor change in elevation. It slopes up 5 feet from the street to the alley. There's a 20-foot sewer easement on the east property boundary, which is primarily in the adjacent property. Staff have determined that there's no physical site constraint to warrant a modification for the proposed building type. To date, the applicant has not identified any unique property hardship to staff that would warrant granting this variance. The proposed development would be setting a precedent for narrow lots less than 50 feet wide in the same sub-district to obtain side yard setback variances. There are six such lots outlined in blue on the map and the subject property is outlined in red. Staff recommends disapproval of the modification request and recommends that the BZA disapprove the variance case. The UDO DRC determined that a setback modification was not appropriate on the west property line. By filing for a variance to a UDO standard, the applicant is sidestepping the UDO DRC's decision and the intent of the document. To date, the applicant has not identified any unique site conditions to warrant a modification or a variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We declare the public hearing open. The applicant has 10 minutes and out of that 10 minutes, you can save 2 of it for rebuttal. State your name and your address. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Joe Mauser, owner of the property. Live at 8357 Lockenver Park Lane in Brentwood. Currently own this property along with a few other parcels in the neighborhood and under development on a 30-unit deal on Western Circle, which is just up the hill from the site. So, familiar with the overlay, familiar with Singay and her staff. Appreciate the efforts that we've made thus far. I think that the main concern or the question that I have, when we went through this entire analysis, we analyzed the site to build townhouses originally and the townhouse side setbacks in the overlay are 5 feet. So, I could have designed a 40-foot wide building by 50-foot long townhouse and achieved a 5-foot side setback with no variance and no special request for the UDO. By looking at the layout of the site being very narrow and long, townhouses weren't necessarily warranted to stack perpendicular to Long Boulevard and the UDO requires them to be parallel. So, we went with a stacked flats layout, which is the same requirement for height. It's a 40-foot height restriction along with, you know, the front and back setbacks, side backs are all the same. So, our opinion was we're building the exact same building structure, 40 feet wide by 50 feet long, whether the units are on top of each other or side by side and where the staircases and access points. We didn't see that as a very fair definition of a stacked flat versus a townhouse design. So, you know, our opinion was we would like to achieve the additional 5 feet, in addition to the 5 feet on the east side that Singay and her staff has allowed, to create a site that's 40 feet wide by 50 feet long. One of the reasons we were denied with Singay and her staff has to do with adequate light and air flow between the adjacent properties in addition to stormwater runoff. And our site plan that I think was shown earlier addresses stormwater in three separate places. And in addition to that, if it was a townhouse design, the 5 feet would be allowed per the UDO, which is, you know, the air and the light between townhouse with the 5 feet is not a significantly different structure than what we've proposed. So, I do have the support of my neighbor to the property line that we're in reference to. He was not able to make it, but I do believe he submitted a letter to Singay and her office that he's in support of the 5 feet. Doesn't affect his property in the future development. He's in support of my project. So, he's not here, but he is in support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You have 2 minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? We'll declare the public hearing closed and this is a little bit different than a straight-up rezone. So, we haven't seen one of these in a little while, so if Mr., our director could kind of update you all on what we're doing here.
Right, well, we see these where there's a variance that's sought pretty regularly, but oftentimes it's a variance that we can understand. It's because of the topography or some other factor that they need the variance and we're able to write a recommendation. But here, you have a recommendation of disapproval and not only from staff, but also from the DRC. So, I think that that's, well, that is why it's in front of you and the things that Singay pointed out, particularly about light and air, I mean, that is a big piece of the issues that we were focused on because also like Singay pointed out, there's a lot of narrow lots within this UDO. And one of the things that really concerned us when we looked at this is setting this sort of precedent for future development and oftentimes the decisions that are made here come back, especially when you have lots in the area that are similar.
Thank you, sir. Why don't we start with Mr. Tibbs?
One of my other hats, we're very cautious about setting precedent with setbacks and I, you know, I feel the same way about this, that it really needs to be a real specific hardship reason why we would change it because precedents can just, you know, start, you know, avalanche, maybe that's too hard a word, but just a lot of things can keep going from there. So, but, you know, I'm always open to hear because there are definitely some circumstances that may make it where you would need to, but by what we've been presented, I didn't see a real hardship or reason to grant it and I'd feel really concerned about making a precedent decision on this setback at this time based off the information we have.
Commissioner.
So, let me understand the applicant's concern. If he were to present this as townhomes, the 5-foot setback would be acceptable?
That's right. It allows 5-foot setbacks for townhomes because townhomes would typically not cover as much area as the stacked flats building type.
So, that being the case, then the concern about the air and light passing through wouldn't be the same with a townhome project?
Not necessarily.
But the orientation would be different.
Okay. Chairman?
Yeah, for Stafford, there's one of those slides that shows some property on it along Boulevard that had a blue line around them. What's the significance of the other, I think his is in red, the ones in blue? What's the difference in those?
The ones that are in blue are also lots that are narrow. They're 50 feet wide. So, if they did come in and they wanted to develop stacked flats, then they could be asking for a same variance for a side yard setback.
So, you're saying that might set a precedence?
That's right.
Okay, that was the purpose of showing that. Okay. What was the, which side is, I think the DRC said the west property line was not appropriate for a 5-foot setback. Which, where would be the west side on this?
On this slide?
Would that be along Long Boulevard?
The west side is going to be to the left and down, so right now... So right next to the property that's outlined in blue.
This one right here, Doug, is this? Yeah, okay.
This line.
So they said the west side was not appropriate. What about the other side?
The other side, they said it was appropriate because there's a 20-foot sewer easement that runs along there. So the sewer easement is actually primarily in the adjacent property, but with the easement there, it maintains that.
Go back to the last aerial, Will. And you can see, you see in this aerial between the multifamily that's there to the east of it, how there's already this opening. So since the easement's there, that's not going to go away.
So is the, is that, pull the other one up that shows the sewer easement. I believe that about 15, looked like about 15 feet was on the adjacent property and about 5 foot on this side. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So is the staff recommendation not to approve either side or not to approve the west side, but the east side is okay?
Right. We're okay with the east side. It's the west side that we're still, is that correct?
Yes.
Then I agree.
Commissioner Far.
I think I was just trying to get an understanding of the townhome versus stacked flats issue too. I mean, I understand, understand why that would, you know, the question is asked by the applicant, but I agree that that area has gotten so densely developed that setting the precedent for even increasing the density and going against the design guidelines that were put in place, I don't, I think that's a good, good suggestion.
If I can, I mean, the massing in stacked flats is significantly different than it is in townhomes and that's the distinction.
Commissioner Diaz.
I support staff's recommendation as well, just for the reasons that have been stated. The UDO does have different options for building types, but I think it's, you know, the guidelines are so, are stated in a way that it kind of helps, it helps you figure out where those are appropriate. So the guidelines are there to, you know, so that you can figure out what, where they could actually go. So I think the UDO, I respect the UDO and I respect the DRC's recommendation as well. So that's why I'm supporting staff's recommendation.
Council lady.
Thank you. I would echo what everyone said. And as far as the precedent goes, the owner mentioned that the next door neighbor does support the 5-foot setback. In fact, he sent a letter that said, "I support it and I want it too." And there's your precedent right there. And so that would put those two people 10 feet away from each other. And that's, that's really close to another set of buildings if you've got that solid wall. I mean, I live 10 feet away from my neighbor and I love him and it's a good thing because we're close enough to reach out the window to each other. So, you know, that's a lot of togetherness. And so if the, if the, if the DRC has made the distinction between townhomes and stacked flats, recognizing that, and I don't know the history that they know in terms of making that decision, I would, I would feel very uncomfortable overriding that. And so I would support the staff's recommendation and make a motion that we support that.
So the motion is to disapprove the modification request?
And the recommendation for disapproval, the variance.
That's correct. There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no ayes have it. We are on to historic.
No report.
No report. Or Parks. Nothing on Parks. Executive Committee, I do apologize that we're rescheduling the retreat. We had some scheduling issues for an important person to be there. And so we're, December 10th is our new date. So make sure that's on your calendar. Same time, right?
Same time.
Same time, same bat location?
Stole my line.
All right. It's bad when we're thinking, I'm like, anything else that you would like to?
Well, and I apologize because I think I probably hold most of the responsibility for having to reschedule it. I've come to these retreats for a long time, just an attorney before I came over to the Planning Commission and now for years with the Planning Commission. And, but it's been under the same mayor up to this point. And I didn't really impart to Mayor Berry the importance of her participating in that meeting because, and as I said to some of you there I was able to talk with on the phone, it's important for the mayor to come in and hear what the commissioners have heard for the last year from the community. What are the community's concerns? What are their issues regarding growth and development? How well do we think that we are moving towards the vision that's set out in the general plan in Asheville next? But then also, I think, for the commission to hear the objectives of the administration and what is the mayor's trying to do and what does she find important and that she wants to accomplish so that we understand what we're, what this body, how we can help move that vision forward for the community. So I was able to talk with her and talk about that, and I had not before. So that's why we wanted to reschedule to provide that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We'll make sure, just make sure it's on your calendar and we do apologize. Thank you for your patience, sir. Anything else? Jessica, anything else? All right. Down objection, return.